Twenty-two, in this much as the budget resolution for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six has not been submitted at this time. Item twenty-four is a pro session right from which COVID carry has to count and ten votes are required for consideration.
All right, without objection, those items are before us. Before I call this special, I just want to check with our public safety folks in the room. We've got this flashing lights. Testing, okay, so the library is just a desk. Special members, these specials, council member Eddie on my left, you on my right, councilor Price.
Thank you. Well, there are those caution, keep those open by the coils, with the west before you go into the organization.
All right, any other specials? All right, seeing none of the items are before us.
Uh, Mr. President, council may now vote on items three, three-nine, as well as thirteen and fourteen, sir.
All right, those items are now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate your vote.
All right.
All right. What's next?
Uh, Mr. President, there is also a request to hold on to twenty-four on the desk. That's a pro session right. And what is next is, uh, council can take public comment.
Uh, so item twenty-four, it's a pro session right. Got it. Okay, so we'll hold twenty-four on the desk and perhaps we'll have a pro session on that item. And before we go to public comment, Madam Clerk, I want to call on recognized Council Member Hernandez for a very special announcement attributed.
May I have your attention, please? May I have your attention, please? This is GSD Building Engineering, where we're doing work on the firelight safety system. Please disregard all official alarms in the case of an actual emergency, we'll notify you over this P A message.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hernandez.
May I have your attention, please? May I have your attention, please? This is GSD Building Engineering, where we're doing work on the firelight safety system. Please disregard all official alarms in the case of an actual emergency, we'll notify you over this P A message.
All right.
At least we know the system works.
Yes. Councilmember Hernandez, you have a lot of engineering to do, which we need this morning.
There's a lot of facts behind me, I feel it. A lot of numbers, a lot of calculations. My brother's an engineer. Really whole whiteboards with the numbers. You need to join us, thank you so much. Come on in, please. Good morning, colleagues. Today, we're here to celebrate the retirement of two outstanding public servants who have helped shape the Los Angeles we know and love. Ted Allen, City Engineer, and Julie Allen, Assistant Director at the Bureau of Sanitation. Together, Ted and Julie have devoted more than sixty-four years of combined service to the city of Los Angeles. What's even more inspiring is that they've done it together. Their partnership in both life and public service is truly something special and bold for a lot of us. We will present each of them with the resolution to recognize their contributions, but first I would like to say a few words about each of them, starting with Ted and then Julie. Ted Allen grew up in Whittier and graduated from UCLA in nineteen ninety-two with a degree in civil engineering. As a bonus, he met his future partner in city service and in life, Julie. Just a year later, nineteen ninety-three, Ted joined the Bureau of Engineering as a civil engineering assistant, beginning what would become a thirty-one-year career of service to the people of Los Angeles. Ted rose through the ranks to become City Engineer in twenty twenty-two and never lost sight of the importance of mentorship. He prioritized employee development by launching a leadership training course, led a technical training series, and initiated management training to make sure that there were other leaders that he could build up behind him. He's had and handled every project he can imagine, land side repairs and street infrastructure to animal shelters. For twenty years, he's been a national leader in public works, helping cities across California and the country raise the bar on the capital project delivery through a benchmarking group with the American Public Works Association. Ted has managed a capital project portfolio worth over five billion dollars. Under his leadership, the city adopted systems that brought new levels of reliability and accountability to project scheduling. Ted helped lead the Build L.A. Permitting Portal project. He helped modernize it with an electric appointment system for virtual and in-person visits, and gave the public real-time access to permits, statuses, clearances, and appointments. He helped build the dashboards that track every key city data, project timelines, permits, service fees, customer service requests, homeless housing projects, affordable housing, all to make sure the people of Los Angeles get the services they deserve. It's hard to measure the impact of a thirty-one-year career, but Ted, your legacy is built into the systems and the people of Los Angeles. Now, I would like to invite Ted Allen to share a few words with us.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hernandez. I'm used to being unrecognized in other people, so feels a little bit of being the one recognized, but I do really appreciate all of your time and taking the time out of your day to do this. I want to really start by thanking the City Council for all the changes you made in the budget process and all of the jobs that you saved, not just in engineering, but in other departments. And I wanted to relay to you all the number of emails and in-person thank yous that I received from our employees that, you know, their job were at risk, you really paid a difference in a lot of lives. So I wanted to start off with that next to you. There was a lot of there, so I'm going to make this very short, but I do want to encourage you, and I want to thank you and encourage you to continue with that path of paying more attention to employee development. I really think, you know, so often we have all the metrics on the outputs of things, the projects, permits, and those are important too, but it's something that really struck me late in my career, we really need to pay more attention to, a more intentional way of approaching employee development. What are we doing to prepare them? What are we doing to train them? So I really thank you for your support in that in the recent years with the budgets as well. I do want to, Ted, I have mixed emotions, it's very hard to leave, I've really, really enjoyed working with the city and working with all of you. I'm really going to miss it, I'll probably still come and hang out at some of the social gatherings from time to time to see you all, if that's okay. And I want to thank all the coworkers that are here, and it's, you know, the Bureau of Engineering, it's just been such a pleasure to lead, and I feel like, I don't know, I guess, I'm just feeling like I'm the luckiest person on earth to lead the Bureau of Engineering work for the city of L.A. Want to thank Julie, of course, for many years of marriage and partnership, and also we often kind of vent with each other when we have special things, very, very thoughtful. I want to thank Gary Lee Moore, our former City Engineer, and Deborah Lai-Trow, our Chief Deputy City Engineer, they've been two of the key mentors in my career, many, many more as well, and all of us here, a lot of the Build L.A. team and others, it's really, really hard that we've done. Very excited, we're very excited to get to see the kids more, down more, traveling and so forth.
Thank you, Ted. Now, allow me to say a few words about Julie Allen. Julie began her public service journey in nineteen ninety-one as a student engineer at L A D W P. After graduating from UCLA, she ascended every rung in Los Angeles, leading to a successful thirty-three-year career in the city of L.A. By twenty fifteen, she was leading one of the most high-profile infrastructure projects in the city, the Sixth Street Viaduct Replacement. When the bridge opened in twenty twenty-two, it became a new city landmark and a career-defining moment. Julie was promoted to Assistant Director at the Bureau of Sanitation. She took the helm of a clean water program, overseeing a team of five hundred and leading work that impacts the salt, like wastewater, flood protection, green infrastructure, and the safe clean water program. Her project portfolio is unmatched. It includes the forty-two million dollar Echo Park Lake rehabilitation project, the one-hundred-and-ten million Machado Lake ecosystem rehabilitation project, and the five-hundred-and-eighty-seven million Sixth Street Viaduct Replacement Project. Julie has also been an amazing leader in developing the Machado Park Lake Restoration Project, which aims to reduce our dependence on potable water and increase opportunities for recreational activities, yes, in Machado Park, and yes, in the Machado Park Lake. In times of crisis, Julie steps up. After the Palisades fire, she led the city watershed action mitigation task force focused on protecting lives, homes, and ecosystems from post-fire storm damage. Julie has held leadership positions in local and national organizations, including co-chair of the Climate and Resiliency Committee for the National Association of Clean Water Agencies, a member of the Utility Public Right of Way Committee for the American Public Works Association, and a board member of Clean Waters Southern California. Julie's career has been ambitious, collaborative, impactful, and we're so grateful for her service. Now, I'd like to say a few words.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hernandez. Thank you to Council President and City Council Members. I really appreciate you honoring Ted and I today on our long career. It's been such a blessing to be able to work for the city and develop so many projects and services that the residents of Los Angeles can appreciate. And I just want to say that during the challenging times with the storms and the fires, it has really helped me understand how valuable the people are in the Bureau of Sanitation and how hard, all of them work every day, and I Engineering, I have many friends too, how hard they work every day to keep the sewage flowing, to keep the storms from flooding residents, and I'm just so grateful to have the opportunity to work with these wonderful people in public works, and I thank you. I also want to thank Ted and our kids for supporting us for this long career. It's, you know, you can't do it without having the right support with you, and I'm going to do a shout-out to our daughter who's graduating next week from UCLA in aerospace engineering, not an easy task either, so children. So again, thank you all, and I look forward to the future with Ted and all the people that we get to after he returns, and thank you for everything.
All right, Councilmember Huck, we have, uh, Councilmember Hernandez, I'm sorry. We have a few members on the queue.
Okay.
If you can call over now and give it to Councilmember Huck.
Thank you, Council President, and Ted and Julie and I have had as many years as some of the other members to work with each of you, but it has been just a tremendous experience to get to know you both. Julie, thank you so much for the commitment to all of the clean water programs, the work that we've done on the watershed and in and around, and here in, and your dedication to the coastline and understanding really these kinds of issues. Ted, your response in the wake of the wildfires, you and your crews on the ground in the Palisades every single day, the sight of you providing relief in a moment and a time when that is what we all just desperately needed. We are really going to miss you, they leave behind an incredible legacy, and know that you are always family in C D eleven, and you are always welcome to come. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hernandez.
So I've got a minute, I have only just coming, I'm actually really sad, just really mad, really mixed emotions, but I just got to say, I did enroll the story to the couple, what a beautiful, like, L.A. city hall story, I hope you guys write it, turn it into a book, to talk about all the things that you might build together, and the intricacies of like having that, I'm definitely read it. You know, I had more opportunity to work with you, Ted, and I got to say, I will forever remember you and appreciate that when I first got here, you pushed that we needed to talk to me, that you needed to talk to my office, there was a lot going on in C D six, and you really needed me to like make some decisions, and I appreciated that, it's like they didn't realize how much was happening in residential, but it was very refreshing to know that you have a history with C D six, and that you've been building your C D six. So from everything through your work on the Sepulveda Basin, and of course, the charter that, the two projects that I'm talking, she's like Hawk, Arneida Sepulveda, as well as the roller derby, the coalitions of RAP and B W C, you know, you're definitely been very responsive, and I appreciate that. And, you know, when I got to see you in action as well, when I was on the club committee, and also to go operations with the way that it works with I T A, I can really tell that you developed a lot of institutional things for the city. And I hope your daughter, who is now the new, a newer government engineer, it's actually just got a lot to grow on, because you really did build. So thank you for letting you go to the city, thank you for being a good partner when I was still very new to this place, and I wish you luck, I hope we continue to see you around. And again, please write that book, I'm really sad, I'm really mad, and it's going to be big shoes to fill, because one thing that I want to also say is, I know we've all discussed before, man, is it impossible to get support from the Army Corps of Engineers, but under your leadership, we've almost, we really, we really chalked that down. So thank you again, to you, to Julie, for having a great career, and we're going to miss you guys.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you so much, Councilmember Hernandez, for this presentation, but I will say, it is a sad day. The two of you have contributed so much, and I too didn't know that you were a couple of them so fairly recently, but your service to the city has really been remarkable, and your achievements are immense and visible in the lives of Angeles every single day. I, you know, Ted, I want to say that, I think this marks both of your careers, but I've had the privilege of working with you on issues that are behind the scenes, that are the scaffolding for how our city works better, notably Build L.A. That's a project that does not generate headlines, that's a project that is all about making our city work better, making our departments communicate better, and you have shepherded that through multiple oral administrations, through departmental changes across the entire city, and you've pushed that forward every step of the way, and now we're at a big milestone. But making sure that that kind of project moves forward, that's a labor of love to L.A. And that's exactly the kind of service that actually both of you have given to the city. So I want to thank you very, very much, and we're really going to miss you.
May I have your attention, please? May I have your attention, please? This is GSD Building Engineering, where included the testing of the firelight safety system. Please treat all future alarms as actual emergencies. May I have your attention, please? May I have your attention, please? This is GSD Building Engineering, where included the testing of the firelight safety system. Please treat all future alarms as actual emergencies.
Councilmember Higginson.
This is a sad day. Julie, I feel like, you know, we worked together on one of your issues, I think I'll say it, I feel like your staff, Public Works Committee, when Chairman Smith was Chair of that, and Ted, I really appreciate my time in office, going through those, growing closer to them, and really frequenting their knowledge and the resource that having you has someone that I could turn to. But I want to say, it wasn't until, I think, last year, when Julie and I were on a trip to Washington, D.C., to accept awards on behalf of the city, that I asked Julie, I went, why didn't you move from Engineering Sanitation? She said, well, you know, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't any sort of conflict. And I said, conflict with what? She said, well, you know, with Ted. I said, you guys are married? I've known you both for twenty years, I didn't know you guys are married. So I just want to say that it's great to see you guys retiring together, you know, it's great to see that other people have the same plans as me and my wife, my wife, you know, the second I retire, that's it, she's done, she's retiring as well. It means you guys like each other, it means you like hanging out with each other, and I just want to say, well deserved, I just want to say thank you for everything, all the contributions you've made to the city of Los Angeles, both of you, and happy retirement.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. You've got to help us before today. Ted, I'm going to consider you a real, sort of, professional person, you have, you've helped the guys, you end your season, and you know that you can, with your help, and your power, you can do it your own way. We can do this, no problem, that's for sure, for the reasons, I couldn't know you by reputation, because we both have, we appreciate you for the service and the willingness to do it. Thank you, congratulations for this exciting time.
Councilmember Higginson.
Thank you so much, Council President, thank you, Councilmember Hernandez, for highlighting your engineering. Our city wouldn't be beautiful without you, you take care, you build all of our assets. As a Councilmember for the Sixth Street Viaduct, thank you so much to you both, Julie especially. You eventually will light it up just for you. Thank you.
Councilmember Higginson.
Just wanted to add my voice of gratitude, and thank you, Councilmember Hernandez, for bringing this forward. The two of you are really quintessential L.A. public servants, you made this city, you have made this city, we are a better place because of both of you. I can only imagine, gratifying you, if you're kids walking around the city, what that must be like, you know, while we might point out the bridge, or, oh, look at the hillside, you know, you're going to point out all the, all the ins and outs that's going to actually happen to make that happen, or, you know, look at the hillside and think about the study and, you know, or in the future, when you're walking by the machine skate rink, Ted, you know, look, yes, I worked with that too, yes, Bob, I just said, you finally got it, you know, done. Every, every bit of L.A. as you walk around has a story, and you guys have been inextricably linked to, and that is, that's pretty amazing. I mean, you really are Los Angeles in so many ways, and just, just wanted to express my gratitude, both of you have, have done so much, and I certainly appreciate it. We all see it, the general public may not, may not see it every day, but you're sort of, you're behind the scenes making it happen, but you know it, and that's why I want to be a fly on the wall the next time you're walking around the city with your kids and telling everything else. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Higginson.
Thank you so much, thank you, Councilmember Hernandez, for this. That book that Councilmember Hernandez wants should be called Engineers in Love, subtitle, our secret marriage. Because I didn't know you did. When I was in pilot life, and the first time Gary Lee Moore bobbled me off, Ted Allen, I didn't know who you were, and what a revelation, I never called Gary Lee Moore back after that. Every time I had a problem, it was always to you, Ted, thank you so much, and certainly that's continued in public life, with your focus on not only providing a great product, but also mentoring so many great folks. And Julie, your imprint on the city from the Viaduct to the shot of L.A. is fantastic, and you know it, in my district, Machado Lake is such a revelation, it's so important, so grateful to you. Thank you for all of your service, thank you for the example of your marriage and family, thank you for your example of hard work, and Ted, when you get home, give those flowers to Julie.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Julie and Ted, your leadership and legacy are inspirations. Side by side, you go through your in public service, raised two brilliant children, Noah and Kira, both engineers themselves, and an elastic impact on our city, both in the leadership that you develop, but also the infrastructure that you build here in the city. And to all the friends, family, and colleagues who joined us, thank you for being here and helping us get Julie and Ted a proper send-off. Let's give it one huge round of applause.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hernandez, and the City Council, the Alvin's. Thank you so much for your service, Director Reddick. All right, now, this is City Attorney, and Clerk, to prepare us for a public comment.
Do you provide a public comment when it's your free to speak? Please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak to. You will have one minute for items up to three minutes total for the items open for per public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. If you're speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to be rude when we speak here. If you are not on topic, or if you cannot tell whether you are on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the health president. At that point, you need to be immediately and clearly on topic. If you're not there, or you're not on topic, you will forfeit your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker on the queue. The item is open for public trauma on the agenda today, it's our highest one.
Four hundred and twenty years?
Mm-hmm.
No, no, no. No, you're crazy. Four hundred and twenty years?
The item is open for public trauma on the agenda today.
That's impossible.
Nope, that's a California, it's a California thing, I have different state, that's why. It could be California.
But are you covered, you have your?
Yes, it's national, yeah. That's how people do it, they do it out of state, registering out of state.
If you require a Spanish-language interpreter, please make sure to pause everything that is said, so the interpreter can interpret.
If you require an interpretation in Spanish, you can. I wish for those who are willing to have a stand, and after each of the questions, they will receive the interpretation.
Don't worry, you will get the same amount of time as everyone else, and we will pause your time while the interpreters are checking.
Same during their commentary, we're going to pass the time for the interpretation. I think you know, so, so, you're going to receive the same time as the other commentary.
One final announcement, so the order in which we take public comments is at random, it's randomly generated, so I would ask that in order to accommodate as many speakers in that council and to have efficient public comment, please wait until you hear the name you signed up under, before you line up on your left-hand side of council chambers. So again, that's the name you've signed up under at the kiosk, not necessarily your real name. Once you hear that, you can line up at any order on the left-hand side of council chambers. Thank you.
Karen Theers, Jesse, and Andrew Lawson.
Did you guys go here? Did you want me to hold the microphone? All right. No, I just.
Yes, good morning. We're going to do all items and general public comment, and I'll walk you through the items.
Okay, so I will give you like three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please leave the items.
So we take a look at item number one, and it's regarding the dedication of an easement and also following up with subsequent enforcement of the easement. Well, here's the issue we have. I actually spoke with a gentleman, and he had an issue, he obtained a tight bar permit, he still got fined, but it was an event he held right on a public easement nearby this area, over on West Century Boulevard. And interestingly enough, he told me about a little story where he had obtained a memo from the city attorney's office saying that, quote, "We do not prosecute corporate defendants." Now, why would you say that? Well, interestingly enough, if you take a look at some of the history on enforcement and the career history of the city attorney herself, Heidi Felton Soto, she actually worked for the Arthur Andersen Accounting Firm, that was the same firm.
So it's, it's connected, yes, my worry, I'll explain it to you, I'll explain it to you. My worry is that, you know, we have these easements, just like item number two, but how are we going to enforce on who trespasses on the easement, who violates the blockading of the public right-of-way ease on the easement? And that's my problem, because we know from the city attorney's office, from the Sierra Club, that they in fact don't enforce any prosecution.
Yep, so we'll move on, we'll move on, yep, we'll move on to item number three. Yep, we'll move on to item number three as part of the multiple agenda item. We have an issue here regarding bonds. Now, what's the issue with bonds? The bond issue is that you have to disclose the method of payment publicly, which is not disclosed here. And again, how are we going to enforce any sort of wrongdoing when you don't disclose, when you don't, don't?
You said item three.
Yes, item number three. We can still, yep, we, yep, we can still make public comment, even though it's not going to be heard on the record for public comment.
This is hold on, you're not going to need speaker time as long. So just as a reminder to everyone, you have up to an initial three minutes, that's one minute for items, for the items. that's one minute for items, for the items open for public comment. Uh, at the courtesy of the, again, items that are open for public comment are one and two, and items sixteen through twenty-three. The speaker is going to start your call, and you can use the remaining one minute and twenty-one seconds to speak to those items, or if you'd like, you can do the general public comment, thus you will not receive an award. Go ahead.
Yep, so, we're gonna talk about the, uh, twenty-two annual budget resolution, and we have, again, a crisis happening in the city regarding the city's budget, and it's likely because the city attorney does not prosecute violators to actually obtain revenue for that budget in the form of fines, whether they be the blockade of the public right-of-way, whether they be a corporate entity that is committing criminal acts and prosecuting them and obtaining fines in such a way. And we know that because the city attorney herself in fact worked for the Arthur Andersen Accounting Firm, that was the same firm used by Enron to commit massive wide-scale fraud all across the nation, and again, quote, "It takes one conviction, that's all it takes. It takes just one conviction for a corporation to go down." Well, Heidi Felstein Soto is right in that regard, and she's scared to actually give money to the city in a legal way, because she knows people will expose her. That's why we have to thank Michelle McGinnis for being able to depose her, and that's why some of that money could have gone to a budget by prosecuting people like Scientology for their public right-of-way violations on Elrond Hubbard Way. And what that will move over to, uh, the general public comment period. We have an issue here where you have a known criminal. The biggest gang in Los Angeles is in fact not the L.A.S.D. or the L.A.P.D. It is in fact the prosecutorial gang, it is the prosecutorial gang of the city attorney's office and the DA's office. That is the biggest gang in Los Angeles. This family knows it, that's why they're trying to run away from the city attorney himself, and it's a major problem. The biggest gang in Los Angeles is Heidi Felstein Soto, and how do you have a sitting attorney for the city attorney's office who literally worked for the same accounting firm that Enron is known for committing wide-scale criminal acts, fraud being one of them? That's what Los Angeles constitutes. It's led by two criminals, Heidi Felstein Soto and Nathan Hawkman, but in particular the vindictive nature of Heidi Felstein Soto, who was sanctioned a quarter million dollars for a malicious litigation in her own divorce case. She was disobeying court orders outright by withdrawing from community funds and issuing over four hundred subpoenas. That's who Heidi Felstein Soto is, a criminal.
Hello, okay. Good morning, everyone. Um, sorry, yes, I wanna speak on everything and public comment.
Okay, so, three minutes for the items and one minute for general, please give it to the items. Go ahead.
Um, first one, number one, and I'm gonna do a thing that's called, like, there is a draft, and, okay, because it is about the city attorney.
Are you off talking?
No, no, there was a, easement enforcement.
He said, you know, you were, well, people do that in general public comment, you cannot keep talking about it, and they give you a warning.
Everything with their, uh, little placards, not lost trucks. I did, the city didn't do anything, they didn't talk about it, how many times, and Mr. Hugo doesn't like this, but he, you know, he goes, "Oh, here's true," which is okay, I know, uh, but the thing is, that it took a bunch of people standing up and pushing back and getting a council board, and just to, to finally get somewhere to get the ADA case piece up, and, and certain things. So I would instruct you guys to really be looking into this easement to make sure that it's correct. Why do you have to give your place?
So, you didn't talk to him when he got back?
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, how about number two? Uh, okay, so, continuing with this place, I have the same concerns that I have with number one, and part of that, because of all this, you know, what I saw through your classes when they gave with the Scientology issues that I've been through here now.
They always do it to me, part is always, it's ridiculous.
But I'm concerned, I don't understand why you have to give up our plan, and why do we have to, you know, we need real estate, you know, that's, and, and see, I can see if one of the jobs we need is that something, and maybe, and, and, to where they, you know, um, you can take care of it with your name on it or whatever, but possibly.
So, you are getting half, half, that'd be like thirty a year.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't want to, okay.
Oh, yeah, 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 it'd be, ten, ten dollar a month.
And kind of look at me and I can, I have, I have, I'm, you know, not here. Okay, so that's all I have to say, fire emergency. You know, let's give, you know, I'll give some, you know, to council members, I think, you know, she stood up and she just played a leadership, so I got to fire, and that was kind of like a crisis, right, you know, and, you know, I thought that you, you, I thought that you, you got funding for your, uh, your constituents, and so I gave you for that. So, if you feel that this emergency needs to continue, then I'm going to, you know, say, yeah, but can we please also, in the meantime, ask, if you want to do a better job with Scientology stuff, just put in a good word for me, please, here. And, you know, I try to appreciate you for that.
General public comment?
Okay, general public comment. Now, if Smokey Scan, you know, they, you know, they're all watching you too, I mean, I'm sure you're all seeing that, they're watching you, like, not listening, isn't it, cause he's like the good one, he was always the good one. Now, Smokey Scan, you catching that? But anyway, all right, I have a permit, the city does nothing for violent, scary criminals, trying to, they get what we're doing, we're protesting, so on Father's Day, and I'm, I'm hoping Smokey Scan would be there, you know, eyes on, to see and, and help us celebrate this, because we are taking this stand against the ADA pieces and family separation. It's peaceful, it's, everything is about peace and, and loving the people of those buildings. We've been here fighting for the people in the, they, the building, but there's started to send people who are out in the, you know, the protest community to antagonize and to assault. One protester was assaulted, one was menaced, and one came, the same guy came to me too. He loved me, wanted to do anything to me, I mean, I'm hooking, he was scared that I'm a gold man, but I would, but, you know, he haven't tried. Thanks.
Good morning, which item would you like to speak to?
He owes you money, right? Otherwise, you wouldn't try so hard going on and, like, for.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
So, I'm trying to serve papers, I don't know what I'm doing.
My name is Zaki Malik, and I'm from Busman's campus in New York. I'm going to read, "He is not a believer, whose stomach is filled with oil that's never poured on him."
Oh, we got a religious.
Although he advised tourist companion.
Are those Husbands, are those what?
He advised tourist companion, if you cook his stew, increase his pride, and share it with your neighbors. Thank you very much, glad to have you back, officer.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning, I'm just speaking on the general public. My name is Obu May, there, Joe. Uh, I'm here to speak on the, on the general public.
Yep, no, I'm sorry.
I'm a member of LA Hand, and a resident of the city of fourteen, at Skid Row, at the Royal Hotel.
You gotta move it closer.
I've been there almost seventeen years.
No, no, you're good.
I'm here today because the conditions in our buildings are terrible, which we, we are formerly part of this Skid Row Housing Trust, the downward home by the heart management companies. And right now, it's, uh, we don't have any security, we are, humans are subpar, uh, rags, broke kids and all that good stuff is happening, and too many things are, are less than felt unsafe, including, um, just crime all over the place. Um, obviously it matters, and you need to hear us, because we're not going anywhere, and please support me in anti-arrestment, and that's all I have to say here.
We can add, oh, two more names. Jason Cigar, Goldenberg, Clyde, and Audit LS.
They're only doing that, so they're, yeah.
Good morning, as the president begins, you'll be able to adjust the microphone as you sit, and which items would you like to speak to?
Not, not any.
Here, what next? Go ahead, sir.
Inspector, we are the council members, this is the home of the entire community. I'm going to share only one verse of the Quran, to sing verse of the Quran to the Lord. Allah says, "In Allah we pray, worship God, and associate nothing with Him, and to parents do good, and to relatives, husbands, the needy, the near neighbors, the neighbor, father away, the companion at your side, the traveler, and those whom you write and bless. Indeed, Allah does not hide those who are self-deluded and most poor." Thank you.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Public comment.
Okay, so, one minute, go ahead.
First, let it, I'm here to support the man that keeps LA House in control. As a resident myself, I am fully aware of our system, parts while we punish the hard working, while according to law, based on this chapter, to exploit the practices of rent collecting. This despite the fact that basic necessities are what are all that motivates most people to stand here before you with restless bodies, basic necessities such as simple peace of mind, comfort, and joy that shelter so often provides. Shelter is for our dreams and memories of life, and, and that's myself, what delivers a hope I could, I could find growing out of what winding up on Skid Row and its dangerous processes, housing solutions. I have to wonder, in three seconds, how to conclude it. I'm here to support housing rights and the other house. Thank you very much.
General Doga, George Ara, and Shemigah. And before the next speaker begins, just as an announcement to everyone in the room, so, I understand that time can go rather quickly, that if you have additional comments that you would like to make, or if it was one of the times you hear you speak today or any other day, you're more than welcome to leave additional written comments at la.comment.com, and you can find that URL either by a quick Google search, it should be one of the first things, if not the first thing that comes up, or you can find the URL of the, 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 of
Is that y'all gonna make sure that equal landlord take care of the children? So that's what we here to do.
Why didn't he go?
I don't know why. He's gonna wait for his name. There he goes.
Good morning, which item would you like to speak to?
Public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
My name is Shubhika and I'm an organizer of LA County. And I reside in CD 14 in the Skid Row area. As a volunteer member of Keith LA House, we support the demand, including capping the rent at 3%. I'm here today in South of there with tenants in Skid Row who live in there, who formerly part of the Skid Row Housing Trust. This city council passed tacos, tenant anti harassment ordinance. And we are very curious what you all feel your responsibility is to tenants in those hotels facing unhabitable conditions? What the enforcement looks like with a landlord who was practically giving buildings? Whether in a tent or an SRO hotel, both living in Skid Row are both forced to live under conditions apparently accepted by this council. What are your plans?
We have a few more names. Christina Boyer, Jason Meridi and Corvett.
Housing, housing.
Good morning, speaker, which?
I'm here to do the ride. Morning, public council. My name is Mr. Pancake. With LA County, CD 14, general public comment. Aware that developer Leo Pushin, uh, acquired 17 former Skid Row Housing Trust buildings and have not done enough in addressing habitability issues in the buildings. Reports there are no security, safety issues, running elevators, empty station plumbing, any tenants being impacted. Senior actually awaits us 15 people's house housing against human rights. We're supporting the demand of Keith LA House also. So that's what I have to say, Mr. Pancake, all positive people, housing against human rights. This 16th thing, it's all in our responsibility, it's a bill, and we're up. So you council, listen, it's all around responsibility. Can I get it right on?
How about singing, we want a song.
Sing a song. Do an outro, do an outro.
Good morning, which item would you like to speak to?
Public comment.
So you have one minute, go ahead.
My name is Christina Boyer. I'm a attorney of public council and a member of the Keith LA House Coalition. I am here to urge council in the time of doubt to make common sense updates to our real stabilization formula that hasn't been updated in 40 years. The housing department has reported this is an unfair formula. To afford a one bedroom apartment in LA, it needs to make nearly a hundred thousand dollars. With the city's impending budget crisis, impending layoffs and slash or section aids and what is supposed to surely be torn possible for this, we in our city can protect us now whatsoever. People are barely hanging on and changing this formula to make it as protective of tenants as possible. But it's a free way to stem the homelessness crisis and budget crisis. We need a fair market now with an annual rent increase formula based on 60% CPI, a 3% cap and no floor, and eliminating unfair policy utilities and extra tenants. New rent increases go into effect in July, so we need to move this now. Thank you.
I know.
And before the next speaker begins, I just want to make an announcement. And then also speaker, I recognize I cannot tell you what to say or what's worth to you, but I just want to mention that there is a very young child here. And so, again, you could say what you want to say as long as it's on the agenda. But for anybody here who may hear, offensive.
It's a prior restraint, prior restraint.
Subject matter.
Prior restraint.
You are more than welcome to exit the room temporarily. You can also do what you're asked for. Or you can pick your fingers here.
He's just trying to mess with you. No, he's just trying to mess with you.
You have three minutes for the items and once another general public comment, please begin with the items, go ahead.
Item number 15, I have an actual soy sauce. 15. (singing) When you're alone, when you're lonely, when you're alone, when you're alone, when you're alone. Life is busy, but we're still together. Even though this idea is too simple, it's just too hard. I just want to be with you, no matter what happens. I don't want to lose you, I just want to be with you. I just want to be with you. If it's true, I'll be with you. Can you tell me, please, why you're leaving? Item number 16 with actual shrimp. Every time I try to get close, I feel like it's catching me. It's haunting my heart, it's haunting my eyes, it's haunting my soul. Every time I try to get close, I feel like it's catching me. Everything is quiet, the only thing I'm worried about is your decision. Every time I try to get close, I feel like it's catching me. It's haunting my heart, it's haunting my eyes, it's haunting my soul. Every time I try to get close, I feel like it's catching me. Now, let's go to item number 17. Item number 17 with no soy sauce. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna sing a word.
(singing) I'm sorry, I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Wait, what? Oh, yeah, yeah.
Next speaker, we have a couple of few more names. First one, Peterson and Silvia Bad. Good morning, which item would you like to speak to?
General public comment.
Okay, one minute, go ahead.
Good morning, council. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Corvett Patterson. I'm a attorney again, after 18 months. I'm a survivor of the Skid Row Housing Trust collapse. I've lived in my building, the Legion Building, for eight years coming June 15. We still have racks and roaches that never been taken care of. We have a non-working fire system. We have an unevolted front door, we have actually a bolted front door. I know we had lessons in. I'm gonna say, after working with multiple different agencies, entities across the nation, what we have in this scenario after 18 months is in disgrace. After presented many dispute is for less than $8,300 per unit worth less to seal this bar. I shouldn't keep having the four, a value report.
Probably not.
For my property management. But I can come home to my buildings. Please, we need some help.
Good morning, you have three minutes, three items.
They don't even bother.
Then, yeah. And then, see you in the street. We can see.
I have a brief thought for public comment.
Okay, well, I can't believe my partner is not here. Item number one, is that okay, motherfucker? Yes. So let's see here, it's Tracy Parker out of Century Boulevard, for me, but see Tracy Parker has a secret. She's got a different name, and Century Boulevard looking like a complete shithole, Tracy. I drove down there yesterday. I'll be going down trying to shame on Tracy Parker. Shame on her staff. That's why we ordered a big cut of your staff to do the whole job. With the exception of William, who continues to do a perfect job covering your ass. Let's get, when you get the staff, what it is. Then we get the number two. Let's see here, see you again. It's an aviation move up, another airport issue. Yeah, what's going on with Tracy Parker, the goddamn fucking LAX? Everybody opening up the choo-choo train. On Friday, you know this is gonna ride it. That is, this is gonna become the first person to ever ride a subway from the get-off over to LAX. This could ever turn into the answer. Yeah, scale fights in the passes. Then let's see what else we got here. What else should I talk about? Ah, speaker. See here, fucking thing, house for fucking here, here we go. A local emergency, say a goddamn emergency, fire's over. The fire's put out. Look at that. Even this area knows, it scratches his head. The fire's over. He keeps scratching his head, this fire's gonna burn people all over. Look at that, it's over, isn't it? Fucking it, the fire's over. America, man, this heat, the fire's over.
And you're repetitive, so it's your own fault.
And it's because I'm mentally retarded, dog. Then we get number 10, British Farm Camp. There's a hot, the queen of the get-off. The queen is allowing the rent escrow program to be removed from a shithole on South Third Avenue. Whoa, that's a nice area, CD 10. Why are we waiting? I'm taking the upper end, fine. Isn't that why we're kind of post-come-by overseas down Third Avenue? That's where the upper class comes in, is the boost to the block. And then we have Artesia, sleazy Artesia, South Third Avenue. A complete dog ghetto show. Now for the general comment. I got Tracy Parker, Savannah. I got fucking Rodriguez, none of the Moicow Rodriguez, his surname wrong, it's M-O-I-C-O-W, for the record. Moicow Rodriguez, C-U-N-T-R-Y-D-E-S-T. They're both gonna testify against the city for their lying claimers. And this is what you miss this part of all along when you've been for August. Now I don't see here I'm just supporting the liar. Why, you're the fucking king. And look at that up there, King Joe up there. He took us so long, money, bro. Where's the motherfucking money, where's the $2 million? And it looks like we need to come and witness, everybody. This is wrong, and no, 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 no. The queen is gonna steal the money the last two years. Fuck the city, get them, get all your brothers.
Good morning. Not your fault, I apologize, there's a tough act to follow, which I don't.
I'm doing now, brother. Thank you. Good morning, my name is Jessica. I'm a member of LA County, arisen as a council official in 14, and I have directly approved this for four years. I'm here today because commissions and outlookings are unacceptable. There are racks, there's moles, and the bathrooms are filled. There are constant pieces on the floors, walls and wood. Union shows us to make him watch a part of the week. Security is either absent, or they're just there for a couple hours, usually on their phones, not protecting anyone. This council passed a tenant anti harassment ordinance, but what did that look like for people living on Skid Row? How does it change airports? Because we're not seeing it. The city sent out on the bill of my business, I'm missing others. So I asked, what do you expect related to the tenants who are being forced to live in unhabitable and unsafe communities? We need that. We need enforcement and we need. I support the demand of the Keith LA House.
What's today?
All right, get this up.
I'll, yes, I'll do it today. I'll do it today. Yes, I'll do it today.
Good morning, which item would you like to speak to?
Good morning, Adam LA County, general public comment. All right, Mr. Grubbs, making the instructions about getting written comments. Do you know if the council members read those as opposed to not listening when people attend from Skid Row coming to speak to them? Imagine reading for things that people said there, that are everything that you're asking people to do. Today, this is a part of the man who's staying out of LA County, co-alition, solidarity with tenants for multiple buildings remotely part of the Skid Row Housing Trust. Knowing that this council, I will pass the updated tenant anti harassment ordinance. What does implementation look like? What does implementation look like across 17 buildings this city signed up on Sunday for just over $8,000 per unit? 17 buildings with persistent issues, having two of the parks and roaches, more lack of security, lacking mailboxes. What is the city's responsibility for signing off on sales with buildings to develop? By asking of the purpose that this council recently put out a statement, a person knows the tenant who has been damped with a building, walked with a gun. LAPD shut up and realized there was no weapons in the hallway, waiting out and freaking out tenants. The initial works was a gun was not found, but what does security look like that a person damped with a building and committed with a gun? What are the rules that council plays in protecting tenants these days?
So please tweet and reach public comment at la council dot com and we'll ask you to link the council file number. That comment is actually part of a record. It gets put into the council files along with motions, any reports that's available, or those we're able to public review, and any other things that are standing up.
Thanks for that clarification.
Thank you so much, everybody, for sharing with us today. Quick, what's for us?
Item 11 and 12, part 3, 4, 5, and that is called special for the president.
All right, we'll give Mr. Price, second to take an offer of order, excuse me, back to the chambers. That has occurred, so let's hold the roll, let's invite us, close the roll, that'll be it. All right, what's next?
Item 10, that was called special by council member deserving.
Council member deserving.
Hey, what's the name of the insurance company?
Thank you, council representative, always. Part of this point is that I didn't want this to just go on, consent. And it's that a lot of that has opportunity to speak with all of you about this and tell you why it's important.
You have very low coverage, right? Even if it's full coverage, but I'm.
We learn as a society, as legislative.
You don't need.
Body over body. What happened in the last economic downturn?
We're in data recovery, we're in data. You need a high cover.
No, what you need is to get my balls checked, your license suspended.
Were going up in six and seven, people were investing.
You don't, you're not gonna do stupid shit like that.
Because of the bubble.
I don't take you as somebody that's stupid shit.
Economy tense, people started losing homes, everyone that had need of each.
But there are certain things, there are two kinds of accidents in LA. Something called.